Shop to order. I'd like to say thanks for everybody for coming in and turn it over to Amanda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you'll recall, back in January, we had a meeting with our engineer climbers about the thoroughfare plan that they had been working on for us, and now they are here to present the final draft of that. We have Travis Hunt and Mark Nolt here, and they are going to give the presentation.
Don't be nervous.
Well, I'm glad to be back. I'm excited to kind of give you guys the final deliverable here. So, a lot of what we've done since then has been, like I'm extremely loud, I'm sorry. A lot of what we've done since then has just been the addition of what you've seen so far. So, I'm gonna still kind of go through what we did. That way you can get kind of a full picture of what thoroughfare plan is and what the full document looks like. We'll go through.
What's an RSP?
Roadway Safety Professional.
What's a PE is Professional Engineer?
Correct.
What's a PTOE?
That is a Professional Traffic Cooperation Engineer.
So we know what we're doing.
Those are all the letters we got. Alright, this isn't part of the thoroughfare plan, but I know you can see our faces, but this is who helped put this together. This is kind of the team we got with all the letters after our names there. So, thoroughfare plan, I think this is a slide that we looked at before, but we'll just go through it again of talking about what thoroughfare plan is, something that defines the functional classification of the roadways. That information comes from ODOT. They do that investigation every several years to classify the roads. So, that's one of the primary starting points for the thoroughfare plan. And from there, we've done additional investigation and sort of data collection of what the roadway infrastructure currently is out in Clayton. So, your lane, number of lanes, your crosswalks, where your traffic signals are at, that's all documented in this for your use. The thoroughfare plan itself will give you some guidelines about what to do with your right-of-way down the road. In planning purposes, it tells you what you should be, you know, looking to do when you have an opportunity to make roadway improvements. So, that kind of preservation guidelines are in here. So, all this documented information is something that will be useful, you know, not only to you, but it'll help coordinate with other, you know, with your neighbors, anybody that you're working with in the public right-of-way. So, it's kind of a nice place to kind of, to share information through, since other places, obviously, that they're doing similar documents. So, we looked at this thoroughfare plan. We did traffic projections to 2050. That was kind of the target date that we had in mind when we started this of, you know, let's start planning for that date now. It's obviously ways off, but it's, it is, I guess, a typical kind of target that you might want to do. So, things that have changed in the document, new things from the last time that we met. We went through and we've documented some changes to your guys' speed limits that you've done recently. I know, Randy, there was one that I think we still need to add along a national road that this will not exactly align with, but we'll get that fixed when we do the final version. We've also made some adjustments to the ADT volumes, the daily traffic volumes, in the future projected map. There were, I guess, some developments that you guys have learned about since we initially did this, so we wanted to account for those as best we could. So, we got those changes in here. We have the future roadways and the future lanes map, so you'll get to see that. And that is, that's gonna tell you about how many lanes are, should be planned for in different parts of the city, as well as new connections. We have your cross-sections as well, and then planned roadway projects or ongoing roadway projects that you guys have on the books. And then there's an additional map of some, of the southeast portion of Clayton that shows where curbed and uncurbed sections of your guys' roadways are right now. So, you probably can't read that. I can't read that from here. It's not meant to be a seeing-eye test. But this is the first page once you open up the thoroughfare plan. It's just the appendix, or the table contents, the executive summary. So, you can read that at your own leisure. But it gives you just the guidance through the document. So, the first thing that you'll come across is the existing condition maps. This is something we've already talked about. They've been cleaned up and kind of made finalized with whatever little changes since the initial data collection had been done back in January. So, you can kind of look through that. This defines the functional classifications. There's some background on the side of the maps describing what is in the map.
Travis, why you've got that map up here, and I know we talked about this last time, but these functional classifications, these colored, basically colored roads you're looking at here, are where we qualify for MBRPC money. So, you cannot, I mean, I can't go out and pave Kimmel. I can't pave Sweet Potato off of grant funding. I mean, it's just MBRPC holds you to those certain functional classifications. And we've done most of them. I mean, I think there's several of them that have not been done on, like, dog leg, and a few of them that we did not get a grant for since I've been here because it just didn't need it. But those are areas that we will be able to do under grants, under grants from MBRPC. Sorry, Travis.
You're good. This was the sidewalks and crosswalks map, so this will show you where you have crosswalks throughout Clayton, where you have sidewalks, either it's on both sides of the road, or one side, or none. It's, you know, a quick reference. Here's another reference of just the speed limits, and this has been updated except for, except for, yeah, national road there. There's a 45 mile per hour section, but I guess that's actually 50. So, we'll get that fixed when we get the final report over to you guys. This is the traffic count data that we got for this project or collected. And this shows, you know, there's several years there, kind of showing when that data was collected. And then there's a color bar scale to kind of indicate where, you know, the blue is a lighter, less, you know, traveled road, and the more red it is, the more heavily used that road is, so. This is the current number of travel lanes in signal locations, whether it's, you know, one lane, which I think there's probably very little, that's just a one-lane public road here. But then you see most of the two-lane roads, a few three-lane sections, and then you get up to the more major arterials with the four lanes and the five lane. So, then kind of put into this document is a reference from the Plan Clayton documents that you guys have that has previously been completed, I think back in 2018. So, this is kind of trying to dovetail those things together and try to make one more seamless document with the maps that really, I would say, have some application to the thoroughfare plan as far as planning goes. So, I'll kind of go through these. I'm obviously not the expert on the Plan Clayton documents, but we have the new regulating plan included in here, the proposed neighborhood plan, the parks plan, which shows some of the trails that are planned, and then the street plan, and then the sidewalk, bikeway, and bus plan. And some of that information, you know, that's obviously future. Some of the sidewalk portions are something that we've already included as the existing sidewalks, so. And then it gets to the future conditions map, the one that we have put together in Section 4. I believe this one was one you may have seen previously. There's been some changes to the ADTs or the daily traffic since last time, just to account for residential development that I think was located at Sweet Potato Ridge and State Route 48. So, that's been added in to make sure that's not under predicting what the volumes are gonna be. So, this is the estimated, you know, future travel lanes and connections map. So, this is where we took what the current number of travel lanes are. I can kind of, I'm gonna kind of flip back and forth just to show. And here you can see, for example, there's a lot, lot of what you guys have throughout the city when you get to the more rural sections currently are two lanes. When planning for 2050 and in the future, the functional classifications, from what we can tell from ODOT's, you know, own research, moving to probably more of a three-lane section in a lot of those locations is gonna be beneficial as it gets, you know, more dense and you get more traffic. It provides better, you know, throughput on those roads, and it will create a, you know, safer travel lanes for people getting around. So, you know, when you're looking at the document yourself, you might have to flip back and forth to really get a nice kind of idea of what the changes are gonna be. But in the future travel lane section, you can see the proposed connections on the top right in that legend differ by the dashed line compared to the current lanes. And then, so those are for the new connections, and then the, any road that is essentially being proposed to be widened in the future will just be a different color than what it is in the existing conditions map. This is the planned projects map, so this is, these are projects that we are aware of that are either planned or ongoing in the city of Clayton. I think there's the roundabout project at Hoke and Wanger, and then there's some work that looks like that you guys have going on on Teywood Road, where it was planned. And then, I think the most recent one we learned about was the Hoke and Westbrook Roundabout Project. So, if there's anything else, you know, you guys are aware of before we finalize this, let us know. We can get it added in here, but this is what we are aware of right now. So, the last kind of main section of the thoroughfare plan is the cross-sections. So, this page is just kind of meant to be a little bit of a, I'll kind of walk through this table. This table relates to the types of cross-sections that are in this report. We did cross-sections primarily for curbed and then uncurbed roadways. It was the way that we ended up looking at this to break it out, kind of think of a little bit more urban, a little more rural way. All the proposed cross-section we have includes sidewalk with the thought of, you know, if you're planning for the future, you're gonna want to plan to at least have that right-of-way there to do sidewalk if you're making any changes through the corridor. So, in this kind of like quick summary table that I have here, we'll look at the curbed roadways first. I guess it's kind of broken up into local roads, and then collectors, minor arterials, and major arterials as the final, kind of biggest section. So, kind of a shorthand way maybe to look at that too, is if it's a two-lane road, or a three-lane road, or a five-lane road. So, these cross-sections have different attributes to them. The different ones that you'll see is whether or not parking is included, whether or not there are bike lanes shown on the cross-section, and then whether or not there's a shared use path on there. So, you know, those obviously won't all be together in many cases where if you have bike lanes, you're not gonna have a shared use path, vice versa. So, we'll just jump into the local roadways first. And here you can see in that first section, this is kind of, kind of the smallest one. This is maybe something you might see in like a neighborhood where the bikes share the drive, the driving lane with vehicles because the volumes are low. It's a, it's kind of a low-risk situation to have them on the same, in the same area. And then again, yeah, you have sidewalks. The next section you'll see is one where you add parking and you have a shared use path. So, you're taking the bikes off the roadway, but you have parking. Then from there, you kind of can grow it out a little more. This one is if, you know, you have no bike path and no parking. And then you get into a bike path and no parking. So, the bike path in that one, I think that's the first one we're looking at with the bike path. You'll see it's kind of, it's right next to the sidewalk. Bike path is shown at eight feet wide. What you would probably do is something where you would have some sort of delineation between the two. It wouldn't just be one big wide surface. You would have to have some sort of detectable barrier break. That way, somebody who's visually impaired doesn't, you know, wander into the bike lane. And so, there's a certain, there's certain design features to that. This is obviously very schematic, so we're not showing that kind of level of detail. But setting aside eight feet of width for that bike lane would give you adequate space to kind of make those improvements.
Where would that go?
Where would the bike lane go? We would recommend that it would go between the, like, the curb and the sidewalk, or where the pedestrians are walking.
No, I know, but on the map, like, what part of the cities would have a bike lane now?
I think it's, that's kind of up to how you guys want to install your bike paths in the end. I know you had some sections in Plan Clayton that showed where bike paths, if I can navigate back to it, where you have some bike paths that are alongside the road. I know you guys, I think, currently have some mixed, some shared use paths in the city as well.
Like on National.
Like on National, you guys have it. Yeah, so, a bike path is something where, you know, there's trade-offs to doing a bike path compared to a shared use path. You know, you're separating walker, you know, pedestrians from bikes, which, you know, is safer because, you know, if you're driving, you don't like bikes. If you're walking, you don't like bikes. But if you're on a bike, you love it. So, the idea is just the separating the speed of those different users is always beneficial. Now, it takes more space, can take more money, so it's kind of a decision.
That's really what I was wondering. I mean, to, like, I don't even know how we would go about planning 14 feet, six foot for a sidewalk, and then a bike lane when we could hardly get a multi-use path on National Road. And I want to say, when we did that, it was $600,000 or $800,000, and that was over 10 years ago. So, I don't know. I get the concept. I understand that. I just don't, I personally don't feel like it's ever going to be fiscally possible for us.
Well, the things that Travis is presenting in this plan aren't things that are necessarily going to come to fruition for the city. There's options that the city can use. If we have a plan or there's a project that we have coming down the pike, these are things that we can look at, that we have vetted through this body on what we may want to do.
These are options for design.
Yes, these are options for design, yes.
Immediately to be put in place, either if you're going to put something in, here's the things that you can look at, how to put it in.
Right, yeah. So, you know, if you have a project coming up and you want to do some sort of connection where you have a bike connection, then you might go and pull, you know, one of these up for that section. And this is like, hey, designer, let's look at this kind of as our option. Let's see what we can do to maybe make this fit. And, you know, if you have a situation too, where, obviously, like you were saying, there's, it takes a lot of space to put things like this in. I mean, this is beautiful, you know, the ideal sort of cross-section. If you have opportunities to kind of set that right-of-way aside and preserve it, you know, through any sort of development, then this is something that you can look at and go, okay, we need this amount of space to put this section through. Let's save it. So, again, yeah, it's a planning tool. It's not guaranteed, or, you know.
And the planning strip being eight foot, do you know, Amanda, how far the strip is in between the multi-use and National Road?
I do not, off the top of my head. Do you have any idea, Randy? How?
Talking about those grass barriers.
Yeah. And we didn't do any trees on that. That's just all grass. But there's no trees on the strip in between the path and National Road.
There are two trees by the bench on both sides.
But that's not on the strip.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I think when you're looking at ideas like this, you know, you're obviously, you're looking at right-of-way. You know, how much right-of-way do you have to pull this off? And do you want to invest that money in right-of-way purchases to do all that stuff? Those are things you gotta look at. But, you know, when they did Main Street back in the day, and I don't know how long ago that was, I'm sure a lot of you know when that was, but that design with the, you know, the trees and where the trees are located, that's terrible design. I mean, in my opinion, that's a horrible design because our electric is right over the trees. Every time a tree gets hit, it knocks out the lights. And every time a pole gets hit, it up the tree. The trees are pushing the sidewalk up his eye, and it's just kind of a bad design. So, I think you could just tool it, and, you know, we have to decide what that, you know, what we would use.
To me, a tool like this would be useful, like, for instance, in the Hoke, Hoke Road expansion, where we have a blank slate. What do we, what do we want there? And again, I don't know how much right-of-way we would have, maybe not, you know, maybe not to do that. I like the bottom design, but it's pretty wide.
Sidewalk on the opposite side, so, you know, again, do you separate those when you're putting that path in? Do you find a way of separating walkers versus bikes, or, you know, how do you do that? But similar to that.
Yeah, and I got a lot more cross-sections to show you. So, yeah, please, ask questions. So, let's see, we were at, so these are collector roads, three-lane sections. As I said, there's bike paths on the bottom one. So, these are also collector and arterial-sized roads, and this is if you were trying to do something where you had parking on the side, and maybe you do parking, you don't have bike paths, but you have a mixed-use path on one side. Or, you know, you grow it, you know, you have the right-of-way, the next one, you have bike paths on both sides. Yeah, yeah, there are options for that type of roadway. If you're, yeah, have a blank slate, or you're trying to just save the right-of-way for future. This is the biggest, starting again to the biggest sections, the major arterials. You know, you really don't have a lot of major arterials through Clayton right now, but maybe in the future, you never know how things will get reclassified or how the city will grow. So, again, these are, these are starting places of what you might do in those cases. So, these are more five-lane sections, sidewalks, or, you know, you have bike paths. You could do parking with the multi-use path. You could do parking with bike paths. That is kind of the pattern between these different types. But again, you know, you can, you can mix and match different things if you feel like there's something else that works better for you. If you don't want parking on one side, you could eliminate that and do a multi-use path in a sidewalk. So, there's kind of unlimited ways that you really could design your roads, but these are some of the more standard ones, so. The other cross-sections that we did were the uncurbed ones, so these ones, there's, they're similar approach. We don't have options that show parking on them. So, this, it's a little disorienting, but, so you'll see the main, the main road there down the middle, and then there's a big offset to where the sidewalks would be. What you would expect is that that gap would be used for drainage utilities. So, you would, we put in here that it varies because it would vary based upon, you know, really what your, what your design ultimately will be for the road. We kind of make a sub-note underneath. Sixteen feet is a good number to use, just kind of to assume. It's relatively conservative, but it goes two feet out, you know, down, four feet base, up, two feet. Totals, it'll total up to 16, doing a ditch in like a trapezoidal shape. So, this is the collector minor road, three lanes, kind of same thing. You just have a shared use path as an option on one side. And you grow out to the major arterials where you have five lanes. Again, kind of same options, shared use path on one side, sidewalk on the other. And then, I think during our process of putting this together, it was asked that it might be helpful down in the southeast portion of Clayton to have a map that kind of showed which roads were curbed and uncurbed. So, we worked, you know, with Randy and Amanda, getting this kind of put together as a quick reference.
I think one of the reasons we asked for this was we, you know, we, obviously, Mr. Merkel and those people that live out in those areas, they know what kind of drainage situations there are. And you talk about Allison Ashbrook and those roads and everything on that side of Main Street, those are problems. I mean, those are, you know, we're not out in the country where we got big, deep ditches where they can hold a lot of water. These are just areas that are flat, and there's nothing there, and there's no storm, there's no nothing. Those people deal with water a little bit different than, say, the people out on Sweet Potato or, you know, Old Mill or what have you. They have water issues. And I think in the future, we're just gonna have to look at, you know, how do we, when we look at these roads, how do we put curb and storm in some of these roads? And, you know, like Mr. Henning said, it's expensive. I mean, you're not gonna just go and put those storm in and think that's not gonna be, you know, expensive, as it will be. But you hope to get grants for those things because those areas are kind of suffering, those areas for water.
Alright, that's the last page. So, yeah, if you have any more questions, I know we talked a little, but same thing on your mind? You can ask now, or you can contact us. We'd be happy to talk with you guys and hear what questions you have, so.
I have a question, actually, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but like a lot of our roads, especially when you look at the larger thoroughfares, we share with other cities. We, you know, we go back and forth, not really share, but we go through Inglewood, through Union, to Clayton, to Union, to Inglewood. So, we cross a lot of, I mean, or, how do we, how do we deal with that? Because they basically have to buy in also, or else we're gonna still be piecemealed like we are now.
Right, yeah. That is a challenge. I think, I think using this is a good way to show kind of what you guys' intentions are with those. But, yeah, I think you also just have to kind of, you'll have to work with them probably on each of those locations as you're approaching a point where you need to make an improvement. Because, yeah, it, we do a lot of work just on projects where we have to work between different jurisdictions, and it can be challenging. It's just more people at the table, right? So, it's, it can slow things down, and you have to get buy-in from everybody on what you want to do. Well, we just do a lot of projects that are, that can be on the borderline, you know, where we're dealing with a city, and then a county, and then ODOT. They're kind of all at the table, and they all need to agree on what they want to do at times. So, it's, yeah, kind of a collaborative sort of effort, for sure.
I mean, similar to that on Main Street, you know, we got that project coming up in 2026, and that's walkability, that's sidewalk, some signal upgrades and things like that, curb. like that, curb. But talking to ODOT, they're going to take off from Harrison at Dogleg, and they're going, they're going to keep on going south with that same type of project, because there's sidewalk issues there as well. So basically, we've been talking back and forth on how can we make this look the same through that route. I realize it's probably too late, Inglewood's not going to upgrade anymore, so it's too late maybe to go that way. But, you know, as far as those, you know, high-visibility crosswalks and things like that, those are things we could do on this project, and ODOT hasn't got their funding yet, because they have, they're just like us, they have to get their own grants and things that, you know, that help them out when you're in Harrison Township and stuff. But they're pretty sure they're going to get it going at the same time we'll be getting ours going. So, of course, ours would be multi-phases, because we're only going up to Heathcliff on this one, and, you know, it'll be multi-phases.
This is more directed, I guess, Amanda, from the standpoint that while we have this project going as far as, you know, the thoroughfare plan, we're also involved in the active transportation plan with my regional planning, how do the two marry up so that we're not having different things happening? And I don't know if you've been, if any opportunity to even see what was involved with the active transportation plan that's in the works as well. What was that like?
Yeah, I haven't been involved in your guys' one, yeah. I did hear about it, but...
Well, I just want to make sure we're not looking at some things that are on the one but not the other, and vice versa, and next, you know, we have two plans that don't, essentially hitting the same thing but not going to do the same thing.
Right, they hit the same thing, but they don't do the same thing. And, well, I'm sorry, Travis, you're right, we have not really involved, Travis. We have involved tool design, we've given them our thoroughfare plan, and the bike paths, all of the things that the ATP looks at for that multimodal transportation that is in the thoroughfare plan has been incorporated into the active transportation plan.
I was just looking, for instance, like on Hayward and Sweet Potato, the path walkways that you've shown are not in the same location that the active transportation plan was showing. I mean, it's just a concept idea as far as where things might be, but, I mean, nothing's engraved in stone. It's more or less looking, I guess you would say, at the most logical place to put that particular item.
Right, and I think with that, though, it's more of an indication that there is interest in putting that type of amenity in that space, not necessarily. I don't think it matters which side of the road the map is showing on, it's just that that is something that is of interest to the community to put in that space.
Well, I just want someone to get the missed idea that, for instance, if they're showing a pathway going up through the middle of, south of Sweet Potato, that they're not, we're not putting a pathway, roadway in through someone's backyard, that it's, this is just a conceptualized idea.
Right.
That's all.
Right. And we can do that. I can get with Carly and talk to her about aligning that better.
I got one more two-part question, so, and I'm asking you, is this, if this is in the scope of your work? Because I think these are both good ideas, and they're things that other people have done, so it's not my idea, but they have, if you look at the, if you're familiar with Vandalia at all, the Route 40, as you come into Vandalia, they put those islands in the middle of Route 40. They're basically planners, I guess you'd say. I think the idea was to, was to maybe like slow down traffic, and say you're entering the city, is that type, do you do that type of work, or is that something that, I mean, to make recommendations on things like that?
Yeah, I mean, I think as part of the thoroughfare plan, that's, that's kind of specific improvement, maybe a little too like granular for what we're doing here, but, I mean, that type of traffic calming is something that, you know, can be very worthwhile if you're trying to slow vehicles down when they're entering, you know, certain parts of your city or the city itself.
I mean, I think on 48, I think that's a great idea, but, and the other one is similar, it's pretty granular, too, but like if you go up and down some of the thoroughfares into toward the city of Dayton, you see these road diets, is that something that, is that in your scope of work, or recommending things like, you know?
Yeah, usually when we, when we get asked to look at a project, you know, like a specific, you know, part of a roadway that has interest in a road diet, yeah, we will do kind of like a traffic analysis there to see, and, you know, a lot of what it starts off with maybe is how much traffic is actually on that road. Is it, is it, there's kind of a sweet spot range of what makes sense, because, you know, historically, there are a lot of roads got built too wide, or, you know, the idea is, oh, just build it really wide, and then, you know, now people, people drive faster, the less traffic there is on a road, so they fly through the road, right? So if there's kind of a sweet spot of, hey, people are driving too fast because there's too much road here, maybe doing a road diet, taking a lane away, or narrowing lanes, or doing some sort of mix of those types of things, yeah, it can help reduce speeds through an area.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments for anyone? Anyone out in the audience want to say anything? Normally, we don't have comments for workshops, but we only have a few people. If you, anything you want to say, or questions, or anything? Okay. I'm going to put you on the spot, but I just thought I'd offer. Okay. Anything else? One last call.
Feel free to reach out with questions if you have.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in, and appreciate your, both, you know, your good work on this, so, thank you. Okay, and we did advertise that our council meeting will start immediately after the workshop, so does anybody need a little break, or you want to go forward? We have a pretty light agenda, so. Five minutes? Okay. Is there a...